Hello.
Matching caps, that's always a sign of something.
Thank you. My name is Chloe Luffelholtz.
And I'm Anna Potter.
And we're with the ASUM Renter Center and the Neighborhood Ambassador Program up at the university. And we just wanted to let you all know, and the general public, about some upcoming events that we have. If you're not familiar with the Renter Center and specifically the Neighborhood Ambassador Program, we work to facilitate healthy relationships within the university district with student renters. So, we go out wearing our derky little caps and canvas and we plan events and just make sure that the university district is a good place for everyone to live.
Yeah, so due to our mission, we are hosting a block party with the university district on April 29th from 1:00 to 5:00. So, there'll be food and events and campus groups if you are interested to attend and we would love all of you to attend.
We also have a campus thrift event coming up and that'll happen after this semester is over. And the goal of that is basically to redirect waste from the residence halls. So, a lot of residents, when they leave, they're throwing away small fridges, microwaves, couches, clothes, things like that. And so, we'll collect all of those little things and thrift them. And that'll probably be around May 14th or 15th.
So, we're interested in community members or fellow students in purchasing or coming to that thrift event.
And that'll support the work the Renter Center does in the following year. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both. Anyone else this evening? All right, seeing no additional public comment, we'll move on to our consent agenda where the items were approved unanimously in standing committees and we save a little time on Mondays by considering them all at once. Ms. Raybine will read the consent agenda aloud. Folks in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering. We'll take comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks. Tonight's consent agenda has six items. And the first, as always, is claims, which are the city's accounts payable. The motion is to approve claims in the amount of $296,218.97 for checks that are dated tomorrow, April 10th, 2018. Number two is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Suzanne Peterson to the Police Commission for term that commences May 1st, 2018, and expires on April 30th of 2021. Number three, let's see, I think those motions are on the next page. Number three is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement amendment with WGM Group Incorporated for Construction Administration Related Services for the Wyoming Street, Prince Street to California Street Water Main Extension Project for a cost not to exceed $29,265.50. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a purchase agreement with AccuCom Incorporated for the purchase of Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, affectionately known as a SCADA system, replacement modems for Missoula Water in an amount not to exceed Number five is a two-parter. First part is to adopt a resolution declaring a 1998 case 580 K backhoe as suit surplus property and authorizing its disposal. Two-thirds vote of council members is required for, to authorize the disposal of municipal property. And the second part is to approve the purchase of one 2018 case 580 NWT backhoe from Titan Machinery of Missoula, Montana for $101,817.94 minus a $13,000 surplus property trading credit for a total purchase price of $88,817.95. This is a cooperative purchase through the National Joint Powers Alliance, or the NJPA. And finally, number six is to approve the purchase of two 2018 Nissan Frontier pickups from Billion Auto Group of Bozeman, Montana, in the amount of $25,434 each for a total cost of $50,868. And this too is a cooperative purchase. It's with, this one's with the state of Montana, LIDA, and of P, LDA, easy for me to say. It's with the state of Montana Cooperative Purchasing Group, LIDA, and MP, 2.3 of the fall bid release. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Questions or comments from council members? Mr. Hess?
Thanks. I just wanted to note for the record that item five, when we saw it in committee, did not have the resolution declaring the backhoe as surplus property, and that's required by state law. So, the clerk's office corrected that and, but it meets the intent of what we discussed and passed in council, but the motion is slightly amended and is correct as Ms. Raybine read it.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Ms. Merritt?
Just for the record, I'll be abstaining from voting on item number three.
Anyone in the audience care to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? I'm sorry, Ms. Harp?
I will also be abstaining from item number three.
Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote with the caveat that Ms. Harp, pardon me, Ms. Merritt will not be voting on the WGM item.
Okay, on the consent agenda, Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. Dabari. Dabari votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes on all items except for number three. She abstains. And Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes on all items except number three, where she abstains. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 12 ayes on items number one, two, and four through six, and 10 ayes and two abstentions on item number three.
And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissioners, authorities, and the community forum. I'm unaware of any of those this evening. We do have a special presentation in the form of a proclamation. Whereas, the safety and well-being of citizens continues to be one of the foremost concerns of the city of Missoula. And whereas, 911 is the first critical link in the chain in delivering public safety services to the community, and the skill of those delivering these services is critical in answering those calls for help and immediately sending responders to provide assistance. And whereas, not only is the safety and well-being of Missoula citizens critical, but also the safety of those responding to emergencies is of great concern. And whereas, the telecommunicators who work in 911 display a superior level of commitment, dedication, and professionalism in accomplishing their mission by receiving calls, dispatching emergency response agencies, and maintaining a communication link with the responders. And whereas, those same telecommunicators work long hours under very difficult circumstances and often go recognized. Now therefore, I, John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby recognize the week of April 8th through 14th, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And I'd like to thank and recognize the telecommunicators at our 911 center for their effort and hard work and commitment under difficult circumstances. We appreciate what those folks do. We will move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues and following a staff report on each of these. Council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as the public hearing unless one council member requests that the item be returned to a council committee for further consideration. Our first public hearing this evening is on a request for rezoning at 2203 South 12th Street West from RM 2.7 to RM 2. And our staff report this evening comes from Ms. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Baker and I'm with Development Services. Tonight, I will talk to you about a request from Gavin Hanks Architects. Tony Moretti is here tonight from that firm. It is on behalf of property owners William and Barbara Biggs and Jeffrey Koch, who are asking to rezone 2201 to 2211 South 12th Street West from RM 2.7, which is a multi-dwelling district, to RM 2, which is also a multi-dwelling district. The reason for this request is to permit additional density on the parcel so that the applicant can construct a new five-unit multi-dwelling building. This rezoning will result in a standard zoning district, which under Title 20 cannot be This is the location of the property. It's outlined in red and has a star on it. It's at the corner of 12th Street and Schilling Streets. It's part of City Council's Ward 6 and the Franklin to the Fort Neighborhood Council. This is a closer view of the location, and you can see that there are three lots here which are considered as one zoning parcel of 43,360 square feet. There are currently four multi-dwelling buildings with four units apiece in them for a total of 16 dwelling units. That's the maximum development currently allowed on the parcel with the present zoning of RM 2.7. The applicable regional plan is the Our Missoula City Growth Policy, which recommends a land use designation of residential high in this area, and that equates to a density of greater than 24 dwelling units per acre. Zoning districts that most closely align with that density recommendation are RM 1-45, RM 1-35, RM 1.5, and RM .5. The applicant is requesting RM 2 residential, which allows 21 dwelling units per acre. That is greater than the current RM 2.7 zoning, which allows 16 units per acre, but it's still significantly below that which is recommended by the growth policy. Areas designated as residential high are close to the core of the community where existing city services and infrastructure are already there. To talk a little bit more about the growth policy, it supports a focus inward, focus inward for development locations. That means encouraging denser development in areas that have existing infrastructure, such as roads and sidewalks, water and sewer, and access to multimodal transit options such as mountain line and bike paths. What the image on the right shows is, the star is the property location, and then you can see that there are two bus routes that are pretty close to it. One is the number eight on Eaton, that's the block west. And the other one is the number two, which is one of the 15-minute routes, and that one runs on Johnson. A little bit further to the right in that image, you can see a little green line, and that is the Bitterroot Bike Trail. The growth policy also focuses on proximity to services, such as schools and shopping, both of which are nearby, and a central location close to the urban core. This location meets all three of the criteria listed above in the growth policy. The current zoning in this area is RT, or RM 2.7, that's the sort of tan area on the slide, and it covers much of the surrounding area. It's essentially a large area where the current zoning allows development at a considerably lower density than the growth policy. I'd like to take a minute and talk about the RM 2.7, the RM 2 district, which is what's requested this evening. This district was created as an option for developers to use with rezones like this to create development at a density more in line with the growth policy recommendation. The RM 2 district was created shortly after the adoption of the growth policy, but it wasn't applied to any land. Because it's a new district, there are no areas of the city where this zoning district has been broadly applied. It has only been adopted in specific instances where a developer has rezoned land in order to create development with density closer to the higher end of areas with land use designation, land use designation of residential medium-high, which permits 12 to 23 dwelling units per acre. RM 2 allows 21 units per acre, whereas the next closest district is either RM 2.7 or RT 2.7, and those both allow 16 units per acre. In comparing the current RM 2.7 and RM 2 zoning, you can see that all building types are permitted, so that includes single detached dwellings all the way up to multi-dwelling buildings. Both have a minimum parcel area of 3,000 square feet. The setbacks are also the same. There is a difference in the area per unit, with RM 2.7 requiring a minimum area per unit of 2,700, whereas RM 2 allows 2,000 square feet per unit. There's a difference in the permitted height. RM 2.7 allows 30 feet or 35 with a steep roof pitch, and RM 2 allows 45 feet. At the bottom, you can see that units per acre, the difference is 16 in RM 2.7 and 21 in RM 2, as we've discussed. The area where the proposed new building will be sighted is at the bottom right. It's the southeast corner of the site. It's a little difficult to see here, but that box is marked with gray hatching across it. Multi-dwelling developments require an activity area, and where those will exist is shown by the two boxes at the top. They have the green hatching on them. The architect has worked with both Development Services and City Parks and Recreation to create an approved proposal for how this activity area requirement can be met with the addition of the five-unit building. Those two green boxes, plus the inclusion of outdoor space for each unit, such as decks and patios, has been approved by Parks as a viable location for meeting the activity Now I'll look at the zoning amendment review criteria, which address whether the proposed change is in accordance with the growth policy, whether it facilitates the provision of motorized and active transportation, and facilitates other public infrastructure like sewer and water, whether it promotes compatible urban growth, whether it promotes the public health and safety, and if it considers the character of the district and the suitability of uses. This rezon does comply with the goals and objectives of the growth policy, and it comes closer to permitting development at a density that is recommended by the land use designation. This development also promotes compatible urban growth in that it better implements the growth policy and encourages density, greater density in areas close to the urban core. It accords with the promotion of the public health and safety by being in an area with existing public services, including police, fire, emergency services, access to sewer and water. It also has proximity to schools, parks, Missoula's trail systems, and other public amenities. The zoning gives, the rezoning gives reasonable consideration to the character of the district and the suitability of uses, which are similar or the same on surrounding parcels, primarily The planning board considered this request on March 20th, and their discussion centered around the adequacy of parking. In fact, they can meet the parking requirement with the addition of the new units, and they also discussed whether this could be considered spot zoning. I'd like to talk a little bit about that as well. There are three criteria that define illegal spot zoning, and all three must apply in order for the rezoning to be considered as illegal spot zoning. The first one is that the use is significantly different from the prevailing use in the area. That doesn't apply in this case since both are, both uses are residential, and both districts permit all residential building types from single dwelling to multi-dwelling buildings. The second criteria is whether the area which is requested, where the use is requested, is rather small from the perspective of concern, with a number of separate landowners benefited from the proposed change. This might apply, but the RM 2 zoning district was specifically created to allow rezones in districts where the growth policy recommends higher density. Finally, the third criteria is that the change is special legislation designed to benefit one or a few landowners at the expense of surrounding landowners and the general public. This doesn't apply because the RM 2 district was adopted into Title 20 and is available to any landowner, where the growth policy recommends density at 21 dwelling units per acre or greater. Because not all three of the criteria apply, this would not be an instance of illegal spot zoning. Ultimately, all eight members of the planning board voted unanimously to approve this rezoning request. As a result, planning board and staff both recommend the approval of this request to rezone 2201 to 2211 South 12th Street West from RM 2.7 residential to RM 2 residential based on the findings of fact in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Anyone care to speak on behalf of applicant this evening? Fair enough? I'm sorry, Ms. Baker?
Tony Moretti is here to answer questions. The applicants could not be here this evening.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing on this proposed rezoning. Anyone care to comment? With that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none, Mr. Dabari?
Thank you. I move council adopt an ordinance to rezone lots 1 through 12. That's 43,360 square feet of Block 83 in the Carline Edition in Section 29, Township 13 North, Range 19 West, a platted subdivision in Missoula County, Montana, according to the official recorded plat thereof, located at 2201 through 2211 South 12th Street West from RM 2.7 residential to RM 2 residential.
That motion is in order. Anyone care to speak on the motion? Ms. Merritt?
I'll be supporting this motion. I just wanted to note for the record, there were some concerns expressed by some of the neighbors about some issues regarding trash storage and snow removal along the alleyway behind this development. And the new owners were here for our committee meeting last Wednesday and indicated that they had just recently purchased the property and that they've been doing their best to try and address those issues. So, I just wanted to get that into the record.
Mr. Dabari?
I'll also be supporting the motion. Ms. Baker called attention to the fact that just last year, in fact, council approved this RM 2 zoning as another tool in our zoning toolbox to help us try to meet the intention of our growth policy, and I'm sure we'll be seeing rezonings like this in the future as folks take a look at what the potential is for residential development in various parts of the community and look to try to achieve what our growth policy had envisioned for those neighborhoods.
Ms. Kears?
I had two sets of comments. One was like Ms. Merritt's regarding the, some of the complaints that we heard about this project from local folks who live nearby. And the only thing that I wanted to mention that Ms. Merritt didn't mention is that after the, or, excuse me, when the building plans are submitted for the new building, the things like snow removal and where the trash is placed will be reevaluated, and so it will be looked at. We, I think, mentioned on Wednesday that as part of a rezon, right? That's what this is? Yes. We can't condition it, and so just wanted to make sure that no one thought that we were sweeping it under the rug. One thing that won't be changed, and we also heard some complaints about, was parking. The development has more than an adequate number of parking as per city code right now, and they aren't required to build any more with this development. They still will have more spots than are required. And so, I just think that that is helpful for us on council to hear, that there are people who live nearby right now who feel like there isn't a satisfactory amount of parking. And sometimes we talk on council about changing and lowering the parking standards, and I am generally open to that discussion. But this is one example that we can maybe think back to, should we have those discussions again, where folks are on the ground and unsatisfied with what's on the ground now. So, I wanted to make those comments, but I will be supporting the project. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the ordinance to rezon, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. Dabari. Dabari votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. And Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 12 ayes.
And the ordinance is approved. Our second public hearing this evening is on another rezoning request at 3720 North Reserve and 3050 Stockyard Road from C24 and M12 to C24. And it's the Ms. Baker Show this evening.
This afternoon, Ms. McMurro became ill, and so I'm going to try to cover this for her. Please bear with me. It is a request from Western Hospitality Group and Laksmi Group to rezon properties addressed as 3720 North Reserve Street and 3050 Stockyard Road from C24 and M1-2, it is a split-zoned parcel, to C24. The reason for this request is to correct a split-zoned parcel on the property and also to bring the zoning more in line with the proposed uses for the parcel. This rezoning will result in a standard zoning district, which I, under Title 20, cannot be conditioned. The properties are located east of North Reserve Street, between Howard Razor Drive there to the north and Stockyard Road at the south. Properties include the Hilton Garden Inn on the north, and then at the bottom, there is a site of the former Hooters Restaurant. The surrounding area is developed with a mix of commercial and industrial uses. The applicable regional plan is the Our Missoula City Growth Policy, which recommends two land use designations. The first is regional commercial and services, and the other is community mixed use. Regional commercial and services is intended to support a multi-county region as a hub for retail, education, health services, public administration, outdoor recreation activities. Community mixed use is described as high-intensity commercials, serving the general community needs, and high-density residential as well. The land use designation accommodates uses with special or extensive land use needs and impacts. It encompasses uses with large land requirements, uses which require outdoor storage of merchandise, automobile uses, regional retail uses, and support services for business, industry, and highway travel. This location is also part of the North Reserve Scott Street Urban Renewal District. In November 2016, the Missoula Redevelopment Agency Board approved the North Reserve Scott Street Master Plan. The intent of the plan is to provide guidance for development occurring along the North Reserve Scott Street Urban Renewal District. That district is one of the largest undeveloped areas within Missoula's urbanized, within Missoula's urbanized area. The North Reserve Scott Street Master Plan vision depicts this area as within the Reserve Street District and Corridor Retail, and that's intended to create regional business destination and to attract and retain commercial, office, and lodging uses. Properties to the north and, to the north across Howard Razor are zoned M1-2, which is limited industrial. That's the gray areas on this slide. Properties to the south of Stockyard Road are zoned C24, community commercial, and North Reserve Business Center Special Zoning District. To the east and west across Reserve Street are areas zoned M1-2, limited industrial. The property is currently split-zoned. As mentioned previously, it is M1-2 and C2-4. The western portion, the western portions of the subject property are the C24, with the eastern part being the M1-2. M1-2, limited industrial, is not listed as a relatable district for regional and commercial services or for the community mixed-use land designation. It was during a review of the property for a proposed boundary line relocation where staff discovered that the property is split-zoned. In Title 20, Section 2001, 100, split zoning of property is prohibited. This rezon to C24 will correct the existing split zoning, and it will also conform with the growth policy land use designation. C24, community commercial, is a relatable district for areas with regional community and services land use designation. The rezon of the subject property to C24, community commercial, accommodates a greater variety of commercial uses, promoting compatible urban growth, and they are in compliance with the regional commercial services and community mixed-use land designations of the city growth policy. C24 is a standard zoning district, which, C24 is a standard zoning district under Title 20 with standard permitted and conditional uses. Here again, we'll talk about the review criteria. The first is whether it is in compliance with the growth policy, and as we have discussed, this rezoning complies with the goals and objectives of the growth policy, and that C24 is listed as a relatable zoning district with the commercial, regional commercial and services, and the community mixed-use land use designation. The rezoning is in an area with improved infrastructure along both Howard Razor Drive and Stockyard Road. Both have sidewalks and shallow bike lanes. Stockyard Road adjacent to 3050 has Boulevard and Boulevard Sidewalk, where Howard Razor has curbside sidewalk. Both sites have access to motorized and non-motorized transportation and are served by public transit. The properties are both served by city sewer and water. The rezoning promotes development that's compatible with existing uses in this area, and it accords with the promotion of public health, safety, and welfare by being in an area area where there is police, fire, and emergency service, as well as access to city sewer and water. The rezoning gives reasonable consideration to the character of the district and the uses on surrounding parcels. This request also went before the Planning Board on March 20, where their discussion consisted of talking about split-zoned properties and how they're identified, whether there are properties in the area that are still in the county, and they also talked about city annexation policies. At the time, the board voted unanimously, eight in favor, of approving this rezon Finally, as a result, both the Planning Board and staff recommend approval of this request to rezon Missoula Hilton Lot 1 and the Howard Razor Commercial Tracks from to C-24, community commercial, based on the findings of fact in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Anyone on behalf of applicant this evening? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this proposed rezoning? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Questions from council? Seeing none of those, Mr. Dabari?
I move council adopt an ordinance to rezone properties located at 3720 North Reserve Street and 3050 Stockyard Road, and legally described as Missoula Hilton Lot 1 and Razor Commercial Track Number 1 and Track E-2-1 of Certificate of Survey 5958, remainder of Lot 1A in Section 8 of Township 13 North, Range 19 West, Principal Meridian, Montana, PPM from C-2-4, community commercial, and M-1-2, limited industrial, to C-2-4, community commercial.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the ordinance, let's see here. See a typo on the agenda. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. Dabari. Dabari votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Van Losberg. Van Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Anderson. Anderson votes yes. And Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That is 12 ayes.
And the ordinance is approved. We have no more public hearings. I'll pass on communications from the mayor and begin general comments from council members this evening with Ms. Kears.
Good evening. I will, two things. First, I will be absent this Wednesday. I'll be out of town for my other job, so my apologies. It's my last known outage for the upcoming future. Secondly, today I was able to spend eight and a half hours sitting in on one of five days of training for the Crisis Intervention Team, CIT, which is a cross collaboration of law enforcement, nonprofit folks, and mental health professionals. There are about 40 people there that are doing this 40-hour training, almost 10 from the Missoula Police Department, a bunch from the jail, a bunch from the Sheriff's Department, folks from the Pavarello and Western Montana Mental Health, and the University Police Department, and others. And it was really good to be able to witness what they go through in order to be better prepared to encounter folks who are dealing with crisis and also might be having a criminal event, or maybe not. They were just called there because someone didn't know how to deal with someone who's in crisis. And so we heard from people who either have mental illness or have people with mental illness in their family, and we had to do exercises where we were hearing voices, and that was very difficult to get anything done. And talked about some of the things that law enforcement folks should try to do when they encounter folks who might be having a mental health crisis, just in the course of their ordinary day-to-day work. And so I wanted to bring it up because we do this training once a year. We have a lot of really good officers who are trained in CIT. This was a training that was probably going to happen anyways, but the city of Missoula invested $5,000 in the fiscal year 2018 budget that allowed for a few more people to attend, and I think that it was really money well-invested, because when our law enforcement officers are better able to deal with the large number of people who have mental health crises in our community in a safe way, then our community is better for it. So thanks for listening.
Ms. Merritt? Ms. Armstrong?
So I think it's amazing Michelle is doing that training. We had a very brief orientation to the signs of suicide by our county employees on the last committee day, and just the brief couple hours that we got, I think, tuned us into the fact that this issue is much larger than we know. It's much more complicated than we know, and the more that each of us reach out to someone in crisis, the better chance we have of saving lives. So that training is always available for free through the county health department, and I encourage everyone to take it when it comes up.
Ms. Anderson? Mr. Ramos?
So I could have done this before or after the meeting, but I wanted to make sure that it was recorded in the minutes, because while I was gone, our council president had a birthday, and he's getting up there, folks. He turned the big 5-0, and I just, it's a milestone over the mountain, over the cliff. I don't know what you call it anymore, but yes. But I just wanted to acknowledge that, and in all seriousness, when I got elected to the council, I was kind of the black sheep of the council. As you know, there's some political differences on here, but President Van Losberg didn't treat me any differently than he treated any of the other new council members. He always answered my questions and met with me one-on-one, and I really appreciate the respect. So I wanted to get him this cup. It says Council President Brian Van Losberg, but as we know, we live in a very divisive time politically, so I had to add something to it for my interconservative hashtag, not my president, so.
I don't know if you're done yet, Mr. Ramos.
Yeah, yeah. That'll be it tonight, so.
Mr. Dabari?
I wanted to say that I had the pleasure of attending the State of the Community Luncheon today, hosted by the city club, and I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and Commissioner Strohmeyer and President Bodnar for their very thoughtful comments. I appreciated hearing from all three of them, and I think we have much to look forward to in working together as a community to help actualize what our aspirations are here.
Ms. Harp?
I wanted to say a special thank you for the governmental affairs. Did I get that right? The class of governmental affairs?
Public affairs.
Public affairs, thank you. That makes far more sense. Thank you for coming. I know this might be a little strange to kind of watch us in action, and that's with quotations, but if you can come on a Wednesday when we actually have committee meetings, when we are far more engaged with the presentations, I think you would learn a heck of a lot more than just watching us sit here, for the most part. But then, secondly, last week, I wanted to just follow up with some of the comments that Gwen made last week regarding Ty Robinson. And it occurred to me that although he probably already knew the stories, after all, he did live them, he did not get to hear them. And life tends to go by so fast that we fail to celebrate one another while we are alive and kicking. So tonight, I'd like to highlight a very special citizen of Missoula. And with that, last week, I made mention of a woman who was looking forward to our streets department cleaning the streets and the bike paths, and that is Kathy Fisher. Kathy is the daughter of Bill Fisher, who passed away several years back, but he was a Quanian, and he was a man whose great love was actually ensuring that the Qantas basketball program was seamless, that the gyms were open, and that the kids had T-shirts. That all matched. If you or your child attended Meadow Hill Middle School in the last couple of decades, you likely were coerced into various activities of gym class under Kathy's tutelage. And her role has morphed into health education, which of course involves that ever-popular sex education, to middle schoolers, which we all know is just fantastic, and obviously no small feat when you're dealing with teenagers. Kathy lives her life as she teaches. Every single day, she rides her bike to and from school, even in the dead of winter. I've seen her. She plays goalie on my winter hockey team this last year, and I don't think she would be offended if I mentioned that she might be older than Brian. And she manages it to do it with grace, with style, and enthusiasm that defies her age. She is a mountain of an athlete, and her love for kids absolutely has no bounds. Our community and our children are very lucky to have this hero showing them how to swing for the fences. Thank you, Kathy.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Becerra? Mr. Hess? Ms. West?
So I was getting blood work done for our health insurance on Thursday, and happened to be in the county courthouse and noticed that right above the water fountain, there are listings of trailer houses that are going to be going up for auction on Wednesday if their property taxes aren't paid. And one of the bills stood out to me because it was for $191 that was owed to the county, and to think that you can lose your home over such a small amount of money is devastating. And thankfully, somebody, not me, actually did something about it. So there is a GoFundMe happening right now called Save Affordable Missoula Housing that's headed up by Svein Newman, and he's working together with Tyler Gernant, how do you pronounce his name? Gernant? Who's our, the county treasurer to A raise, well, he's not, with the guidance of, I should say, of Tyler Gernant. So he's raising money right now. The deadline is five tomorrow. So far, there have been $3,336 raised, and what he's going to do is just take a check to the county treasurer, and he will, the county treasurer will help select the homes so the money doesn't go to, like, abandoned properties, and pay off some of these property taxes so people can stay in their homes. So if you would like to support that cause and help people stay housed in Missoula, you can Google GoFundMe Save Affordable Missoula Housing, and I hope we'll drum up some more community support for some of our vulnerable folks.
And old guy on the end?
Yeah, old guy, older than dirt. Thank you, Councilman Ramos, and thank you to all my colleagues for the lovely lunch and wine and cake. It really meant a lot to me. I get a chance to work with some really fantastic people, and I'm deeply appreciative of that. Half a century in, half a century to go, is the way I'm looking at it. So I feel young. Please do come on a Wednesday. Would be great to see you all. And I wanted to echo Mr. Dabari's comments. Really do appreciate the comments from you and Dave Strohmeyer and Seth Bodnar today. It was a good discussion and important for the community.
We have no committee reports this evening, nor do we have any new business. Any of you have additional items to be referred? If not, I have one. On Wednesday, as part of committee of the whole, we'll have a legal update for the committee, and President Van Losberg has made time with the clerk's office for that. Any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, or announcements? I have one. I took public affairs reporting 33 years ago. You do not want to come to the Wednesday meeting. Come to the short ones. This is a short one, all right? The voice of experience. Thank you all for being here. I'm glad journalism's still a thing, so congratulations. With that, ladies and gentlemen, as always, I thank you for your service. We'll be adjourned.